It is 10:00 AM. This commission session is now live. You may proceed, Commission.
I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. One of the things I want to point out is we are working under the new guidelines set forth by the health centers. While many of us who are vaccinated are dispensing with masks, certainly I want to make the point that anyone who feels that they would be more comfortable wearing a mask, we have some just outside the door, please help yourself. And obviously, we have hand sanitizer, which we would also encourage the use of. With that, we will go forward with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Pray with me. Father, we're grateful for the blessings of this day. We're grateful for the engagement of the residents of Clay County and the office holders of Clay County. We ask that you be with us today as we go about the business of this wonderful county in which we live. We ask this in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or any other alterations to the agenda as published? I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda prior to taking those changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion is made for the approval of the agenda as printed. Any discussion, any changes or alterations? Seeing none. Commissioner Thompson, you're free to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Brings us to meeting schedule. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission will be a business session next Wednesday night, May the 26th, beginning at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. That brings us to honorary resolutions. There aren't listed on today's agenda. Under discussion items, we have two items, the first of which is Public Health Center. Mr. Administrator?
The Director of the Public Health Center, Mr. Gary Zabarak, is here to deliver the annual report and make other comments.
Please proceed when you are ready. And as Mr. Zabarak is making his way to the podium, I want to point out to anyone who would comment today from that location, make sure the light is green on the collar of the microphone. Please identify yourself and speak clearly. Thank you.
So, first thing I want to... Oh, Gary Zabarak, Director of Public Health, Clay County Public Health Center. First thing I want to do is provide you all with copies of the annual report so that you can kind of follow along and then keep that copy for yourself. And I have one for the clerk for the official record. That one. So, clearly, 2020 was not a normal year for us in Clay County and across the country and frankly, across the world. So, it goes without saying that we're in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, the likes of which we have not seen for over 100 years. And on a personal level, I've seen multiple pandemics in my 36 years in public health. I've never, ever seen anything like this. And it's brought the disease, disability, and death, unlike anything, with the exception of the AIDS epidemic, which started back in the 80s. As we all know, this pandemic has devastated our lives, disrupted our lives. It's...nothing's been left untouched. I think we all know that. So, I say that as a preface. It's the focus of my letter in the annual report because it is the dominant theme of 2020. So, as you go through the annual report, I will just walk you through some of it, but the obvious theme of the annual report is the year of COVID that we're calling it. So, if you will just go to the fourth page, and I'm not going to read all of these bullet points, but our staff have done a tremendous job, not only in how we responded to this pandemic, but specifically in putting this report together. So, it's put together to provide you, the reader, with a timeline of how things occurred in 2020. So, I'm not going to go through all of those, but I am going to highlight a couple of things. On March 17th, a day I will never forget, due to multiple cases within the KC metro area, a state of emergency is declared by Presiding Commissioner Nolte, and a public health emergency order is then signed by myself. And that was the beginning, March 17th of 2020. Fast forward a little bit till April 6th, and unfortunately, we had to announce the first death of a Clay County resident due to COVID. And at that point, and this was April 6th, there were 80 cases, 80 cases in Clay County. And I'll come back to that total later. On April 29th, the Health Department released the recovery plan to provide insight and guidance for how the county will move forward through this pandemic. On June 8th, some of you may recall, and some of you may have unfortunately been impacted by this, we began to have major outbreaks in long-term care facilities. A large number of individuals died in those outbreaks, unfortunately. That started through the last part of May and the first part of June. If you'll...you'll read through the rest of that timeframe, but I wanted to just kind of set the table for you in terms of how this started and how it progressed in 2020. And in this report, it goes all the way through, obviously, the end of the year. And so, for the audience, this report is available on our website. So, you can go to our website and pull down the annual report and read it at your leisure.
Could you...I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you go ahead and tell us the URL for that so that people can have that and they want to look it up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. It's www.clayhealth.com.
Thank you.
And then you'll go to the About Us tab, and then you'll get a drop-down menu, and you'll see annual reports, and you just click on that. So, one of the challenges for all health departments, but certainly ours, is when you're responding to a pandemic and a disease outbreak of this magnitude, it's all hands on deck. So, when we responded to the pandemic, no employee or program was spared from adapting to assist in new roles and tasks. And so, we pretty much retooled the organization at that point to enable us to effectively respond to the pandemic. And so, that's all listed on that page, and it goes through the various programs and talks about how they shifted and what their roles became during the pandemic. If you go to the next page, the interesting thing about the pandemic is that life still goes on. And despite the global pandemic, the health centers' programs and staff continued to provide valuable services to the community, which were our normal responsibilities in addition to trying to manage the pandemic. So, those are listed on those two pages. And so, I would encourage everyone to read this annual report. It does a really great job in describing the sequence of events and the impact of the pandemic in 2020. So, despite all of that, we still function as a public health center and continue to provide all of the services that we're responsible for providing. So, I just want to commend our staff for doing an absolutely phenomenal job in the midst of what was clearly an incredibly difficult situation. Our staff were just as impacted as everybody else. We have parents of schoolchildren. We have folks who take care of their elderly parents in their homes. I mean, all of it. And so, I just couldn't be more proud of our staff. And I fully also acknowledge and support our Board of Health. They've been outstanding through all of this as well. This has just been the challenge of a lifetime to try to navigate that. We recognize that we made some unpopular decisions, but the thing that allows me, as a health director, to take some comfort is that I know for a fact that the decisions that we have made and the actions that we have taken have prevented hundreds of people from dying, thousands of people from potentially hospitalized, and tens of thousands of people from being sick. And that's what our responsibility is, is to prevent disease, disability, and death in our communities. And we've done that. And I also want to point out that we couldn't have done that without the help and cooperation of all the citizens of Clay County who were very compliant with masking, which I know was unpopular. But individuals in every community who practiced social distancing, who wore masks, they were a big, big help as well, so I want to thank them as well. So, at the end of 2020, we had 7,446 cases, 307 hospitalized, 115 deaths, and 71 outbreaks. So, if you fast forward to today, in May, we've had almost 30,000 cases. Again, at the end of the year, it was 7,000. We've had over 300, unfortunately, over 300 deaths, so the number of deaths has tripled since the end of 2020. And unfortunately, we're not done. The CDC guidance that was recently announced was welcome news to a weary, pandemic-wary nation for sure, but it's really important to understand that we're still in the middle of this pandemic. The virus is not going anywhere, and so, we still need to be cautious and practice safe, like continuing to wear a mask if you've not been vaccinated. Practice social distancing. Avoid large gatherings if possible. Until we get our population at an immunization rate that would provide us what we call herd immunity, which you probably heard a lot about that, we've still got a ways to go. But thanks to endeavors like Operation Safe this year, just the Operation Safe Collaborative has put almost 100,000 vaccinations in arms. That's pretty substantial. One of the things that I have enjoyed in my role as Director of Public Health over the last 17 years here in Clay County is the collaborative spirit of the Northland that exists. It's day one of me getting here that was pointed out that, hey, this is something that we do here. And everyone coming together for Operation Safe, organizations, volunteers, communities, all of it, it was amazing what was able to be accomplished in such a very short period of time. And so, the fact that the communities came together once again to help was just phenomenal, and we're grateful for that. We're grateful to the commission for their support for Operation Safe. And so, moving forward, we don't know what the remainder of...I'm now moving off the annual report. We don't know what the remainder of 2021 looks like, but we do know that vaccinations will continue to slowly increase in terms of the number and therefore, the percentage of folks that are vaccinated. We are still, in our clinics, just at the health center, we're averaging about 100 people per clinic to get vaccinated. So, we're still strongly encouraging vaccination. There are so many opportunities in the community now. Vaccine is readily available, you know, grocery stores, pharmacies, primary care providers, the Health Department. The opportunities are there. So, and we understand that there's vaccine hesitancy, sorry, from many members of our community, and that's okay. Understand that the vaccine is safe and effective, but if you do have questions or concerns, contact your primary care provider or physician and have a conversation about that vaccine. And so, that's kind of where we're at here in May. Again, we've highlighted the year in the annual report, and I just wanted to give you the brief update for where we're at now on COVID. So, again, we don't know what the future is going to bring, but we will continue to see cases. We will continue to see people die, unfortunately. That's the reality of this situation, so...but we're getting better slowly, and there is light at the end of the tunnel. So, with that, I'll be quiet and be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Well, thank you for coming before us today. Obviously, this year, your annual reports are always anticipated, but this year, obviously, has been an extraordinary year that we've just gone through. I do want to say that I certainly agree that the cooperation, top to bottom, has been really something important to getting in front of this, and we are getting, we are not in front of this, but we are making, I think, substantial progress. I think, starting with the Operation Warp Speed at the national level, all the way down to where we are today, obviously, absent a vaccine, we would not be where we are at this moment. I do think you can make the point often enough to say that, yes, we should encourage people to take those preventative measures. If they have apprehension about the vaccination, they should certainly consult their physician to see if, in their particular case, how that might impact their health. But certainly, it is not something to be ignored. One of the things I think that was probably one of the more high-profile and one of the more, I think, impressive operations here in our area, in our county, was Operation Safe. And I realize that's winding down, or it's in process of winding down. So, if you could just give us a few thoughts on that, and I know you've been here to speak about that before, and I anticipate you'll be here to speak about it in the future, but if you can kind of give us an update on that, that would be appreciated.
Sure. So, Operation Safe began in February, and it actually concluded two weeks ago, the first week of May. And so, Operation Safe was a collaborative between Clay County Public Health Center, Liberty Hospital, North Kansas City Hospital, and Cerner Corporation. Those were the four, what I will call, core partners, but every municipality in Clay County provided support and resources for that effort. And there were hundreds and hundreds, I think probably, it would not be a stretch to say thousands of volunteers over the course of Operation Safe. And so, it was just an amazing effort, and we ramped that up in five days, which is also pretty amazing. If you went through the Operation Safe experience, you know that's really impressive. And let me say this, the Operation Safe strategy was designed to be a bridge strategy. It was never designed to be the go-to immunization effort for our area. When that started, vaccine distribution was incredibly limited, and the state provided vaccine to what were called high-throughput healthcare entities. And the partnership between Liberty Hospital and North Kansas City Hospital was designated by the state as a high-throughput healthcare entity, originally designed back then to get 4,500 doses every two weeks. And once we stood up Operation Safe, we demonstrated to not only our communities, but to the state, that we knew what we were doing. And so, we quickly began to receive vaccine in the amounts of 5,000 per clinic opportunity, and they allowed us to expand that into multiple clinics per week. So, we started out 4,500 every two weeks, and then at our peak, we were vaccinating well over 5,000 people per clinic. And I can't remember the exact numbers per hour or per minute, but I guess I would ask, if you do the math, I'm not going to do it in my head right now. It was pretty...the throughput was incredible. And remember also that the COVID vaccine is a two-dose vaccine, so once you went through once, we had to make sure that we got you through again, so...but that's a little bit about Operation Safe. Did that answer what you were asking for?
Well, the thing that struck me was, I mean, obviously, we are very interested in this government generally turning a corner and having a new beginning, and I certainly appreciate the fact that the logistical feat, much less the public health feat that was mounted, especially when we're referring to Operation Safe, it was great to be able to talk to my friends around the state and have Clay County being held up as an example of what should be aspired to. So, certainly, I think we all appreciate the effort put in, and the, you know, obviously, the health concern is primary, but the idea that we as a county and we as a community are really going forward in a positive manner, I think, is a great additional benefit of the work that Consortium has done. The other thing is, I would, if you could, just kind of, as long as you've got kind of the microphone, could you give us just a, you know, brief hit on what some of those services are? I realize some of those had to be, take a little bit of a backseat when we were going through the pandemic at full bore. Now, it sounds as though we are able to get back into the general services. Could you just give a general idea of what some of the services citizens can go to your department for?
Sure. So, one of the programs that is central to our mission is the childhood immunization program. And that program is about providing vaccines to children so that we can prevent vaccine...so that we can prevent, I won't say this the right way, vaccine-preventable diseases in children. So, with our nursing staff having to do COVID immunizations, what we were faced with was a situation of, well, we can't stop immunizing our children for vaccine-preventable diseases, otherwise, we're going to have outbreaks in our community of potentially measles, mumps, et cetera. Those things still had to continue, and so, that was a real challenge for our staff, but we've just, again, done a phenomenal job of keeping up. So, childhood immunizations is one area, environmental health programs, restaurant inspections, food service inspections, pool inspections, to make sure that our community members are safe, are able to enjoy a safe experience, whether they're eating out or making sure septic systems are installed properly so they don't pollute the groundwater supply. Those kinds of things in environmental health. Our WIC program, our WIC program, interestingly enough, we saw a significant increase during the pandemic in that program. WIC is Women, Infants, and Children Program. And we were, we had to pivot on that one because that's a very people-intensive, face-to-face kind of experience, clinic experience for our mothers and young children. And so, we had to pivot on that and do that in drive-thru fashion, and then modified also to do in electronic fashion. So, those were, that was a program that was very impactful to young families, mothers, and children, that we definitely had to make sure that that, there was continuity, that had to keep going. But that's another program. Of course, we have vital records. I'm the registrar for birth and death certificates in the county, and life still goes on, so people were unfortunately passing away, and good news is, people were being born. So, you know, stuff just keeps going on. And so, those are some of the things that we provide to our communities on a daily basis. And then, we also, guess what? There were other diseases besides COVID that were also occurring in our communities that our community health staff had to do and conduct disease investigations and contact tracing and so forth in other areas. So, yeah, it was impactful, to say the least.
Well, that's great. I've got one other question, but before I go to that and then go to the other commissioners, could you give us your website one more time, just so citizens can access your information?
Sure. It's www.clayhealth.com.
Thank you. The other thing, and this is more looking forward, is my understanding was there was a bill passed in Jefferson City House Bill 271, and it had provisions in it related to healthcare centers. I believe I have the right number. Governor's not signed it yet, so I don't want to get premature on it. I suspect he will. But my request, I guess, is that you take the message back to your board and ask them to review that. I would very much like to start a dialogue between this commission and that board as far as how that might affect going forward and how we can, you know, if, you know, God forbid, there is a reemergence or a different situation that is of a similar nature, that we can hit the ground running all that much faster. So, if they could review that and possibly get back to us at some point on how those provisions might impact the ability for us to react, I think that would be, I think that would be something that would be very productive.
You know, yes, I'll carry that back, and you said something there that just sparked a thought. So, I forgot to mention, one of the concerns going forward are the number of variants of this disease that are occurring, and so, that's kind of an unknown. What we know so far is that the vaccine does, in fact, offer protection against the variants that have been out there so far. And so, that's really good news on the vaccine front. And then, it sparked another thought. And then it sparked another thought that I want to throw out there. So one of the challenges in managing a pandemic is that every day is a new day, and each day provides new data. And so things progress from what we knew a year ago to what we know now is completely different. And that's frustrating for the public, and it's equally frustrating for us in the profession because we want to be able to be on the front and, and be consistent with what we're providing and telling people. And when things are changing on a regular basis, because it's new, that's what a, a novel virus is. It's never been in, in the human population before. So there's no experience to draw from in terms of, for example, like polio, or, or measles, or, or other communicable diseases. So that made it especially difficult. So I understand that a lot of the frustration from, from the community as we move through that. And, you know, we, we have the same frustrations as well.
Commissioner Carpenter, did you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make?
Sure, thank you, yeah. First of all, thank you for being here and for the annual report. It's very helpful. Look forward to reviewing it more thoroughly. So I just have three things. First, I just want to thank you for your work during, during the pandemic. You know, I was, we were in the middle of our legislative session as a state representative last year when this began unfolding. And my wife is the executive director, as you know, of the Liberty Hospital Foundation. And so we were both tracking this pretty closely in January and February last year as things were developing. And seeing what was going on overseas, it became increasingly clear that this was a highly infectious and dangerous disease that was frankly likely to kill millions globally, which has in fact happened. And so I know the, the weight, the, the weight that I felt at that time trying to get state government to take the situation seriously and to act. And in my wife's case, you know, trying to be supportive of the frontline health workers at Liberty Hospital, doing things like, you know, collecting masks and hand sanitizer and all that. I know the emotional weight that we felt of that was, was very intense. And so I can only imagine that somebody in a role like yours, over the course of the last year, and the responsibility that you felt was, you know, I'm sure even more significant in that regard. And so I thank you for your, your work over the last year.
Thank you.
I want to talk about the deaths real quick here in Clay County. You mentioned 115 by the end of this year. Now, that, that number is non-Kansas City, Clay County, right? So underneath there, you have 237 if you include Kansas City in Clay County.
So the number that I gave you today, as of today, that includes Kansas City?
The over 300 number?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, that, that was what I was hoping to clarify, thank you. Because obviously, Kansas City, you know, may not jurisdictionally be your area, but obviously, it's the, a big part of Clay County. It's the majority of the area I represent.
Yeah. If you live in Clay County, whether it's Kansas City or Kearney, it's still Clay County.
Right. So over 300 people have died, just in Clay County alone.
Yes.
You know, it's the kind of thing that, back at the beginning of this, had we told folks that just in Clay County, over 300 people were going to die, I think there would have been a lot of shock at that. And I think over time, one of the things that's happened is it's sort of been normalized for people. We all sort of got used to it. But it's a, it's a devastating thing that hundreds of people just in our county died. And I think remembering that is important. So thank you for putting this together. The final thing I want to talk about is just vaccinations. First of all, echo Commissioner Nolte's sentiments, and, and many other folks have said it, I've said it before. But obviously, Operation Safe was a huge success. Very grateful. You know, you mentioned almost 100,000 shots. It's something to be very proud of. So I, I thank you and, you know, North Kansas City Hospital, Liberty Hospital, and then, of course, Cerner for, for being an amazing corporate partner here in our community to, to make that happen. Now, we, I, I do have a little bit of concern, though, in terms of where we're at vaccination-wise. Obviously, you mentioned a couple of weeks ago Operation Safe has wrapped up. I do think this is the most important thing we can do at this stage, is get more people vaccinated. You know, we've passed 60% as a country now of adults who have received at least one dose. That just happened in the last few days.
Right.
Last I looked, both Missouri and Clay County were pretty dramatically lower than that national average.
Yes. We're, we're actually just a tad over 40%.
So thank you for that. That's, part of what I was going to ask is where are we? So we're just over 40. You know, obviously, that's a pretty significantly lower number than it being just over 60, which is where the country is at. What can we do here in Clay County to catch up? And what, what can we do as a commission? What can the health board do? What can any of us do? Because, you know, I'd rather be at 60 than at 40. And if there's something we can do to help effectuate that, I would, I would like to do so. So, and, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, so, you know, if, if, you know, if, if this is a conversation that takes place over the course of weeks, that's fine. But I do think we, if we can, do more to, to catch up, I think we should.
Yeah. No, that's a great point. And as I mentioned earlier, I think there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy in this area. And I think that as much promotion and education that can be provided, and promotion is just as important as education, but as, as much of that is, can be provided by multiple entities, whether it's the commission, the health department, the hospitals, chambers of commerce, economic development councils. You know, the ironic thing is, the quickest way to get through this is now, is through vaccination. And so anything that can be done to promote and educate on that, at the end of the day, it's a, it is a personal decision for people to make. And so for those that are still not sure or have questions, they, they need to contact their, their personal healthcare provider, reach out, and ask those questions, and address those concerns that they may have. They can also reach out to the health center, of course. But I think it needs to be promoted because what we don't want is it to just fall, fall off to the wayside after Operation Safe. As I pointed out, the opportunities are plentiful in Clay County to, to get vaccinated. The vaccine is available. So it's not going to be as dramatic of an increase like what you would see in Operation Safe. You know, we went in February, from February to May 6th, May 5th, to almost 100,000. It's not going to, it's not going to have that kind of trajectory now going forward. So it's going to be more incremental because people will be going to the pharmacies, or the grocery stores, or their private healthcare providers to get it. So it's going to, it's going to take a little bit longer, John, to get to, to that, to that number because of those, those two things, I think.
Okay. Thank you for that. Let's just, I guess, maintain a dialogue in terms of what, what else we can do, and I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, sure.
And, you know, you mentioned promotional, you know, marketing-type stuff. I, totally, that makes sense to me. And then if there, if there are other things we can do as well, and I say that to my commissioners and administrators as well, I, I hope we can all be thinking about that. We are, as a county, you know, as I mentioned, pretty dramatically behind what the national average is in terms of vaccination. And we know it saves lives. You, you can already see the trajectory nationwide in terms of a dramatic decrease in case counts, hospitalization, and deaths that has tracked with the increasing percentage of people who are vaccinated. It's also just science. We know that that's true. So just look forward to maintaining a dialogue with all of you about what we can do to, to, to further that. And I thank you for your time. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. Gary, I really would like to thank you for coming in today, and this has chock-full of great information, and given us an update. It is important to stay up, up to date on all these things, and you've done a pretty good job of doing that with us. I'm glad you, you touched base a little bit on the variants that are coming out, and, and I, I know people who are currently in the hospital right now, sick with this. So what is it looking for, like, in this fall? Are we looking at, like, we're going to need to do, like, a booster shot of this? Are we going to have to do this on an annual basis to get the shot again?
Yes, that's a great question. So as I mentioned earlier, every day is a new day, and as we gain more experience in, in dealing with this pandemic, we learn. If you would have asked me that question three or four weeks ago, I would have answered yes. The current thought is that there will need to be a, a booster shot. But starting last week, I started to notice in the literature, there is a growing trend amongst infectious disease physicians and public health folks that their evidence at this point may not suggest that a booster will be necessary. So the, the real answer to your question is, we don't know. And so what's, what's typical in the scientific community is you always question everything, never take anything at face value. And so what I expect, Commissioner, is that over the next couple of months, there's going to be some pretty interesting debate about that, as well as, as more data comes in, which will enhance that debate. So that's, sorry if that seems kind of, iffy, but that's where we're at right now.
No, no, that's great. I just was, was just kind of curious to see. I know that, you know, 20, 2020 was a really rough year for, for our country, altogether, the whole world. We went through a lot. And, and like you said, life goes on, and I think everybody is looking forward to that day where we can reach some level of normalcy. I'm looking forward to take my mask off here in a couple of weeks, once I get my second shot. So I think we're all just striving for that. So, and I, I do appreciate you coming in today and giving us all this information. And I will say, an added little bonus, I like to see in my, my previous profession, I'm in this little photo here on the back, so. Smirking at the board members. So that was a fun little tidbit there. So, thank you, Gary. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you very much for being here. I realize you've taken a little bit more time than these annual reports take, but I think this is arguably one of the most important issues that we've, and challenges that we've faced recently. So I don't feel too badly about taking a bit more time than usual to make sure that we thoroughly discuss this particular challenge and how we go forward. With that, thank you very much for your report, and we look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Okay. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Mr. Administrator, I believe we have a second discussion item related to the prosecuting attorney's office?
Yes, we do. A staffing request from the prosecuting attorney's office, and prosecuting attorney White is in the room to make further comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Prosecuting Attorney, you, you may proceed as soon as you make your way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Daniel White, prosecuting attorney for Clay County, Missouri. Procedurally, what I'd like to do is talk briefly about why I'm here, why I'm here now, why you should care. And at some point, and, and if you have questions as I move through this information, don't wait to the last. I'm, I'm very open to having a dialogue if something comes up during this discussion. But when I'm done, Spencer Curtis, who's another employee at the prosecutor's office, is going to, he has a flash drive, so hopefully, we can give this to someone, and this can appear up on the screen as he works through the numbers associated with what we're talking about today.
We'll try to, yeah, if you can provide that jump drive, we'll try to go ahead and get started on the technology so that it's ready when, when the presentation of that part begins.
It's always, it's always good if it's a non-lawyer dealing with the technology, I've found.
Agreed.
So the question may be, why are you here now? And the answer to that is, because I didn't need to be here before now. We just heard the health director of Clay County talk about COVID. COVID is the main reason that I'm here. COVID, the easiest way to think about it is probably like this. COVID was an offshore tsunami, all right, an earthquake, and it shook the ground. And for over a year, it had a stifling effect on the criminal justice system. Well, those waves from that tsunami are about to hit the coast, and we are the coast. And that's why I'm here now, because there, we do have an opportunity to do something about this, about what's coming. And make no mistake, it's coming. The criminal justice system, the Supreme Court technically shut us down for a year, about 14 months. We tried to have one jury trial, one jury trial in October of last year. A murder case, a serious case. Woman had been in jail for a long time. She wanted her opportunity. We attempted to give that to her. And in day four of that jury trial, the court reporter got COVID. The court reporter sits right next to the judge. The judge couldn't go forward, had to quarantine, and her and her attorney said, we don't want another judge. So it's a mistrial. So that case is waiting, along with a whole bunch of other cases. All right? So when you look at what we do at the prosecutor's office, every case that we file during a calendar year doesn't necessarily get disposed of in that calendar year. Some do, some don't. Well, over the last 14 months, very few got disposed of. We were still filing cases, but we weren't disposing of very many. And the reason was because people have to be in court. You need jurors to have a jury trial. You need to have people get up and speak openly at a trial, and that's hard to do. You want to guess how many witnesses want to come to court during a pandemic? Not very many. So we have this accumulation of all these cases, and they're just piling up and piling up. So as we come out, what appears to be out of a pandemic, we're just getting started in the criminal justice system. Those cases are, at our current staffing level, not manageable. We can't do it. Well, why? Don't have anybody at prosecutor's office to try cases? No, we got a lot of people can try cases. But over the last couple of years, the Supreme Court has implemented a number of rules associated with criminal, the criminal justice system that make a lot of things that we do ministerial. And we have to be in court for them. When I came to the prosecutor's office in 1993, I went to work for my career then, we had cases in Division Six, criminal cases in Division Six, and criminal cases in Division One. And occasionally, traffic was in Seven, and occasionally, there'd be some cases in Division Four, but very unusual. So we had basically two courtrooms where we handled criminal cases. Now, there are nine divisions in the Clay County courthouse, and we handle cases in Division One, in Division Two, in Division Three, in Division Four. We're about to start handling them in Division Five. We handle them in Six. We handle them in Seven. We handle them in Eight, and we handle them getting ready to start in Nine. So they're spread out. Well, each one of those dockets requires a lawyer to be present in the courtroom from the prosecutor's office if it's a criminal case. So you have all these places, all your people are supposed to be. And in the meantime, if the police department brings a case file, prosecutor has to review it. Does it meet the requirements to file a case? You have to talk to them. There's a prosecutor on call 24/7 in Clay County, and a lot of you know that. There's a prosecutor on call 24/7 in Clay County, and a lot of you know that. Those, that's another responsibility. The problem we have is I can't have people in court and get ready for trials at the same time. I don't have enough bodies. So what I'm going to ask you for is not a hope or a dream, or if I ask for two, maybe you'll give me one. I'm asking you for what I need, all right? And here's how I'd like to do it. I need two prosecuting attorneys and a clerical staff member. And just so you know, this is all in criminal, all right? So as commissioners probably know, the prosecutor's budget is split up. 548, child support. 547, criminal. Child support, we can make that happen. Not asking for anything in child support. It maintains its status at 100% reimbursed through the state of Missouri and the federal government. Not asking for anything in child support. But what I am asking for, two entry-level positions in criminal and one clerical in criminal. Because those are the people that pretty rapidly we can train to cover those dockets. And that leaves the experienced staff that we have to go try those criminal cases, to handle those cases. So I, what I'm asking for are those positions. I'd like for you to consider funding it through the CARES money. And I'd like for you to fund it for the remainder of 2021 and for 2022. And then we'll come back and see where we're at. We'll see where we're at after that. So as some of you in this office or in this room know, you didn't see me a lot, you didn't see me up here very much in the last four years. Well, there's a method to that madness, and the people that spent a bunch of time up here the last four years probably know why I didn't welcome up here very much. All right, I'm up here now because I need something. It was better to stay in the other building and stay out of sight and hopefully out of mind and not have myself in a budget situation like a clerk or sheriff, all right? And this, and this commission's been very good to the sheriff's department about funding law enforcement. But the sheriff can't convict a single person of a crime, not one. So when you fund the sheriff, and we have more sheriff deputies out on the street, they're generating more cases. So we need help too. And I think if the number I saw about the CARES money over the next two years, I think I'm asking for about 1% of that. Think I'm asking for about 1% of that. So I brought a case with me. It's pending case. I can't mention his name. Name doesn't matter. But I brought it to illustrate what's been going on in the courts over the last 14 months. 11/12 of 2019, the first appearance on this case. It gets continued a month to 12/17, 2019. Defendant fails to appear. A warrant issues. 1/23 of 20, arrested again, back in court, and gets a new court date of 2/20 of 2020. 2020, fails to appear. A warrant issues. Gets arrested, shows up again, gets arrested, told to come back to court on 2/25 of 20, fails to appear. 6/15 of 20, on bond and the warrants recalled, all right? So now, what's happening with this case is nobody's appearing in court, right? This is all Zoom stuff. The jail is pretty much empty, except for the killers that we have over there that should still stay in jail. And by the way, the sheriff's department did a fantastic job. Not one case of COVID from an inmate in the Clay County jail during the pandemic, not one. Now, some of the deputies got it and spread it around to each other, but not one case of COVID in the inmate population of the jail. 6/30 of 20, on bond again, and he gets a new court date of July 19, 2009. That case gets moved to July 28 of 2020. That gets moved to 8/25, right? This is, this is a nothing case as far as serious cases. And it's just getting kicked down the road with thousands of others down the road. Kick the can, kick the can, kick the can. 8/25, fails to appear again. Gets moved to 4/15 of 2021. Then it gets moved to May 11. He shows up, May 11. Now it's set for a bench trial on 5/18. He doesn't have a lawyer. It's a bench trial. It's a misdemeanor. It's not a big deal. But if it's a bench trial, we have to try that case. Somebody has to get this case ready, all right? You're like, well, it's a bench trial. How long can that take? This ain't the point. There are thousands of these. There are thousands of these cases that all have to be moved, that have to be moved at some point. And I don't have the people to do it. All right, now I want to talk really briefly about some of the things the Supreme Court did to make this worse. Discovery. The rules of discovery in the state of Missouri says the prosecutor has to do certain things. The new rules of discovery say that if something exists related to this case, but the prosecutor's office does not have that document, that video, that thing, that we are under an obligation to go get it, to go find it, bring it in and give it to the other side. Which I had no problem doing that, but it takes time. Somebody has to physically do that. Is that a job clerical? Maybe going and getting it might be a clerical, but figuring out is a job a lawyer has to do about where it exists and how to get it. That's something a lawyer has to do. We have a new bond rule. The bond rule is that judges are under a new guidance system of only very serious cases should have monetary bonds. Well, it may not be a serious case, but it may be a prison case. And if it's a prison case and you're out on an ROR bond, you're going to fail to appear, you're not going to show up. The sheriff's going to have to go try to find you and arrest you again. And the last thing you're going to do is waltz in the court and say, hey, I'll take that three or four-year sentence and go ahead and send me down. People don't want to go to prison. I mean, that shouldn't be a surprise to any of us. We have a new prelim rule that the Supreme Court passed. It says 30 days. There ought to be a prelim within 30 days of an arraignment of a tri, of a case. All right, well, that's another requirement on our time, all right? Can't just have a prelim. Somebody's got to look at that file, figure out who the necessary witnesses are for the prelim. Somebody's got to go serve that subpoena. We got to get it ready for that hearing, all right? So a prelim, not a big deal until you stack up a thousand of them. And then how do you do that? How do you handle those cases? And by the way, in our country, the criminal justice system is an adversarial system, all right? We can be friends with defense attorneys, and we are a lot of times. But the reality is when it comes in the court, it's adversarial. They're not going to help us. In fact, they're working against us in the interest of their client while we're attempting to seek justice on behalf of the citizens of the county. So when there is a problem with how we're going to get all these cases handled, that's like blood in the water to sharks. They don't feel the pain of that, but the citizens of the county will feel the pain of that if something's not done to make sure we're in a position to handle those cases. So the other thing that we have that COVID is mostly responsible for is the huge number of cases that are in warrant status, people that have failed to appear to show up for court. And I think Spencer has those numbers, and he'll show you those numbers. So, and, and I'll let him come up here and talk about that stuff. But what I am asking you for is for help. I'm not asking for more money for me. I'm not asking for more money for the people that work there. They probably all deserve it, but I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for additional bodies to handle what's coming in the criminal. And by the way, this is going to happen all over this state and all over this country. This is not a Clay County problem, all right? I saw a report a couple of weeks ago that Jackson County yellow-shetted. When they declined a case, they call it yellow-sheeting in Jackson County. Yellow-sheeted a couple hundred felony cases because they just didn't have time. Well, that's not the oath I took to the citizens. It's not how I plan on doing things. But ultimately, if I don't get some help, we will have to triage and figure out what we're going forward on. I mean, since January 1st, we've got a case where a man, because a woman rebuffed his romantic, wasn't even sexual, just wanted to have a romance with her, wanted to be, wanted to go on a date with her. She rebuffed him. He poured gasoline on her and lit her on fire in Clay County. Since January, we had a body dumped out in the, a woman dumped out off Cameron Road, and she was cut into 15 pieces. Those people will get their justice. Those victims will get their justice. We'll make sure of that, along with help of law enforcement. Justice on those cases will be done. But the guy that gets the catalytic converter stolen off his truck, somebody's house that gets broke into, somebody uses your credit card and messes, steals your identity, those victims deserve justice too. And if we're put in a position of choosing, I don't have any choice. I'm going to have to move forward on somebody that set another human being on fire and somebody who cut a woman into 15 pieces. So that's why I'm here. I'm asking for your help. And I think Spencer has some stuff to show you. You may have hard copies of what he's going, if you'd like to.
Before we move on to the next speaker, I just want to give commissioners an opportunity. Ask any questions or comments, and then we'll proceed with the next person.
Okay.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
I don't have any questions at the time, Mr. White, but I, I appreciate the work that you do in the prosecutor's office and your staff. And I hope after the end of this, we can, we can get you some help that you need.
Thank you. With that, Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, I just thank you for the presentation. And I think maybe I'll wait until, I guess, the conclusion after Spencer goes. But then I'd like to just briefly talk with you after that, I think.
Yeah, for sure.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah, be glad to answer questions at any time.
Thank you. I think we're ready for the next speaker then. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Counselor.
Ms. Prosecutor, you talked about the tsunami getting ready to hit the shores. Do you have an estimate from the court side when kind of the opening is going to happen? When cases are being set, when trials are going to start?
We had a jury trial coming up in a week or two.
Could you go ahead and speak into the microphone so our recordings pick up on that, please?
So I believe we have a jury trial set in a week or two. And the specific cases that are set over the next seven or eight months, I think, are part of Mr. Curtis's presentation.
By the way, I did have one thing that crossed my mind, and you talked about the timeline. You're talking about the new people would have a shorter timeline for training. Can you give us an idea of what that timeline ballpark you would be? As far as the time between you could hire these individuals and they would be ready to take on their duties?
So as a licensed attorney would come in, they'd be sworn in as assistant. And as far as covering dockets, that could, they could be, they could be up to speed on covering a docket in just a week or two.
Okay, that helps to know that, because the idea of when that tsunami would hit helps us to also analyze, you know, how your need is going to hit and what your timeline is. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, so I'm Spencer Curtis, I'm one of the assistant prosecuting attorneys. I looked at, what I've done here is basically a snapshot in time of numbers, right? So you'll see information about jury trials, about preliminary hearings. Those are always in flux. Cases get moved, they get continued, they plead out. So these are just, these are ballpark numbers, really. So I don't want you to take them as the gospel truth that this is what they mean, and this is what they will continue to mean. This is just what we have mostly as of yesterday. But some of the numbers are from the beginning of April when I started to draft this, this presentation. So with that being said, so these are the case numbers that we filed in our office since 2018. You'll, you'll notice that there's a kind of a consistency there. The, the numbers that they go up, they go down. That's based on a lot of different factors. That's not really necessarily relevant today. But you'll see that even in 2020, in the middle of the pandemic, we set, you know, we filed 11,000 cases. That's a lot of traffic cases. That's a lot of traffic tickets. But you can see, you know, there's a, well over 1,000 cases were filed, felony cases were filed in Associate Circuit Court. For those who don't know, cases start in Associate Circuit Court that are felonies, and then they are transferred over to the circuit court, either through a preliminary hearing or the grand jury, or through a waiver by the defense saying that there is probable cause to believe that a felony occurred. So those cases get moved over to the circuit court. But they start in Associate. So these are the numbers that we have so far. And then again, in, in this year, this is as of, as of yesterday, the number of cases we had filed. Next slide, please. And this is the number of outstanding warrants that are in each division. You'll see Division Seven has a very large number. That's based upon the fact that they handle traffic, and there's just a lot of traffic warrants are out. That's pretty consistent. It's pretty normal. Division Six also handles a lot of misdemeanor cases or the initial filings of cases. And so then you also have summons that go out instead of a warrant. The people fail to appear, they issue a warrant, and so that's why you have a lot of cases in Division Six as well. As Dan said, Division Five is going to start taking on cases, so you'll see that number grow as well. But that is, that is currently about where the number of cases are that have pending warrants. So those are cases that are sitting out there, that are active cases, that we have victims on, that we have witnesses on, that may at some point be set for trial, that are all sitting out there with warrants. So next slide, please. So moving on to this next slide. So just for the, everyone's understanding, so the column on the left is just the attorney's initials, just by attorney's. This is something I created for Dan, you know, before we even talked about doing this. PFI means Pending Further Investigation. Those are cases that we have reviewed and sent back to law enforcement agencies so that they, because they needed to give us something else. We needed video. We needed a statement from someone. Those are cases that have been sent back that at some point, we hopefully will get back from a law enforcement agency with whatever it is that we asked for. Referrals are cases, there are new cases that have come in, that have been assigned to a particular prosecutor. Active cases are the number of cases that are actively in court. That means that we have filed and that people are actually appearing on, those people who aren't in warrant status. Those are the cases, at any given time, we have 1,000 cases in court, essentially. The next one is the open cases, so that is the number of cases that we have in addition to those cases that are in warrant status, that are assigned to us. And then the final one is the culmination of all those. So really, the final column is the most indicative. And as you can see, I'm SC. I have 440 cases assigned to me that at any given time, I have to, will have to address, have to deal with, have to close, whatever that may mean. Sometimes you get cases, I've gotten three cases this week. They're all bad check cases. They're all involved, someone stealing someone else's check and filing, or buying something with that check that was fraudulent. And someone being picked up on a warrant at seven years old, based upon someone else stealing their check. But I have to figure out, was this check forged? I have to figure out if this is something that this person actually did, but it's seven years old. Do I have witnesses? So that, you know, these cases, even if they're in warrant status, do turn up, and they are active cases. So even if they're old, so it's kind of indicative of that. So if you go back to that initial slide where we have 11,000 cases that we filed, and you look at something that's been in the news frequently lately, has been the public defender and their funding system. Their fund, their argument has been that they should cap their caseload at 240,000. Their fund, their argument has been that they should cap their caseload at 240 cases per attorney. So if you take that 11,000 and divide it by the number of prosecutors that we have and by 240 cases, that number would be that we, we should have 45 attorneys in our office. Okay? If you, to take the traffic cases out, because they're not labor intensive, they're just procedurally heavy, we still would have 23 that, by, by those numbers. And I'm not saying their number is even right. I've actually seen by prosecutor standards, we should handle around 130 felonies. Ninety percent of my cases are felonies, so clearly above those standards. But those are just anecdotal, that's just anecdotal evidence of the number of cases we're talking about, the number of cases that are assigned to people. Now, several of them you'll see have lower caseloads. That's because they're either part-time or Mr. Sanders or Mr. Reeser, they both handle various serious crimes, and so they're very work-intensive, so they require a different level of work. That's why their caseload's lower. But that's generally what we're looking at now. I mean, somewhere around 6,000 is what, is what we're, we're pending, are currently dealing with. Next slide, please. But what we do in addition to all of those things are all these things. So what Dan was talking about, the dockets, people being in court, we have 37 assigned dockets a week, 37 times that we are scheduled to be in court. And it may be short, it may be five minutes, or as this morning, Division 1 is probably going to be three hours long. Yesterday's morning, yesterday's Division 1 probation violation docket is generally three hours long. So those are all times that someone is out of the office, not able to call victims, not able to talk to witnesses, not able to file cases, not able to follow up with law enforcement officers on something because they're in court. And, and the other one that I would point out is the treatment courts, because the treatment courts, we have one attorney assigned to the treatment courts, there are three treatment courts, and they basically eat most, if not all of us Tuesday, and most, if not all of us Friday. Right? So those are, he's a part-time guy, so that's two of the three days that he's in our office. So they're labor intensive, and so they take time. And then all these other things are things that we do almost every day, right? Not every single day, but search warrants, subpoenas, hailing subpoenas for the juvenile officer are things that we do almost every day. That's thing, those are things that defense attorneys don't do by their very nature. So in addition to all those cases, that's, these are some other things that we have to focus on as well. Slide. So back to what we were talking about with jury trials. We currently have 70 jury trials scheduled between now and the end of January. We have a murder trial set basically every month, starting, I think, in, in August. The trials that were set, the murder trials that were set over the past two months have been moved largely because of COVID, but not specifically because of that. It's very, very difficult, as Dan pointed out, to get the jurors in the room, to have enough space between them, as the CDC directed, six feet of social distancing, to get all those people in a room and to be able to put all the witnesses through. We had one case that had 30 witnesses, some were out of town, and to be able to get them through the courtroom safely and everyone being treated safely and fairly without having a mistrial, which would mean the trial starts over or having some other problem related to it, was prohibitive. It was, it was, it was difficult to do. So most of those cases have been moved into the fall, and so we're going to have a backlog in the fall. And that's just the murder cases, right? So we also have violent offenses, we have DWIs, and they're felonies, they're, they're not misdemeanors. Felony DWIs, meaning someone has priors or someone was injured. And then we have a lot of sex offenses that are also set for trial, and those tend to go. Those are the most tried cases are sex offenses because they're most, they're the most difficult to deal with, the most difficult for people to plead guilty to. So we, this is, this is the current number. This is, again, trials were set this morning, I guarantee it, so that these, these numbers go up and down throughout the year. Preliminary hearings, so as Dan illustrated, the preliminary hearing rule changed, so that they actually are required, judges are actually required to have a preliminary hearing in a shorter period of time. And so we currently have 93 preliminary hearings set in the next two months. This is just in the next two months. So preliminary hearings, just so everyone understands, is the probable cause hearings to determine whether or not there's probable cause to believe that a crime occurred, that this defendant committed that crime, and it's a felony. And so we have to call in witnesses, we have to call in law enforcement, we have to present testimony and evidence. They're not wildly labor-intensive, but when you have nine of them set on the same day, they can be. All right? So you have to find these witnesses, make sure they come in to testify. And so we have, that's a large number, right? And that's not including Division 5, which will start bringing in cases, which it currently hasn't. And then there's a lot of cases that are set for prelim where people have failed to appear, so their warrants are still out there, so we still have that backlog to deal with as well. And again, that's just in the next night, this is the next 60 days. And the majority of that, I would say 75% of that is in June. So what I also did was I kind of balanced some numbers. So what you'll see in the next couple of slides, and there's only a couple more, we'll be done, is that Clay County falls in between Jefferson County and Green County by population. And so I've gone out and I've determined our, our numbers based upon the population from the Missouri Census, Census Data Center, I think is what it's called, and I identified the kind of, our kind of general numbers, the staffing numbers that we have in our office, and I compared it against a couple of other counties, just so you have a kind of a context to what all of this means, because this is just a lot of numbers without that context. So this is what we have. So we've, our population's increased by 12% between 2010, 2019, one of the fastest-growing counties in the state, plus some plat, really. And we have those numbers essentially. So right now, we have seven full-time, we have one position that's open, couple, three part-time attorneys, and then some traffic folks. This is all, and again, I should have caveated at the beginning, this is all, this does not include anything that's non-support, child support-related. This is just the criminal side. So, and then that's based upon the numbers that we filed, that what we saw before. So slide. So when you look at Jefferson County, they have 25, in the vicinity of 25,000 less than us, and they have 16 attorneys, full-time. They file in the vicinity of the same number that we do. Their numbers, they didn't, they didn't, they weren't able to specify between misdemeanors and felonies, they just gave me a solid number, but that's, that's the distinction. So they're in the same kind of range that we are by population. Now, the difference between us and Jefferson County, Jefferson County is the southern side of St. Louis. It's the suburbs on the southern side of St. Louis, though. It's not Kansas City. They don't have St. Louis County or St. Louis City budding up into Jefferson County. It's mostly suburbs. But they still have a large criminal population. So, so it's not an ideal comparison. Then the same thing with Green. Green has about 25,000 more than us, and between the two of them, they have 42 attorneys. So again, not exactly the same, because it would be more like having Kansas City proper in our county, but we do have a large chunk of Kansas City proper in our county. So, so the distinctions are, the, the comparisons are not exact, but you can kind of ballpark it and see where we are. I mean, 42, 16, and then, you know, we're at 11 or 12. So, next slide. And then you compare it to Platte County. And the one distinction I'll make with Platte County is they're smaller than us, but they're next door, so I figured I'd put it in here. Platte County has 10 currently, nine and a half actually, once part-time. And they have a law enforcement tax, I'm not exactly sure what it is that they have, where they're, what the funding mechanism is, but they have one attorney funded for the next five years, a new attorney position funded for the next five years. So they're going to be increasing the size of their office over the next five years as well. And then if Boone County, you know, they have six investigators, and every one of these counties has at least three victims advocates, we have one. Some of those are VOKA grants, but that's only one. They can only, they can, the grants can only fund one position. So even if there's still, you know, at least three in each of those counties, they have more support staff. They file more felonies, but they also have the highway, they have, I mean, it's Boone County, right? They have Columbia. Even if you look at a place like Christian County, down by Springfield, they have seven full-time attorneys, and they have 80,000 population. So they have three victims advocates. So by size, by, by comparison to other counties, we are on the smaller side of an office. And we have a large child support office, and some of these, some of these attorneys are funded by the state, they're non-support attorneys, but it's generally one, one attorney. They generally don't have the size of office, and they also don't have the size of recruitment that we do. They're not even close, most of these guys. So by numbers, that's what, that's where all these are, this is what they show. But a couple of things that I would, I would add, just as, as a line attorney, as someone who appears in court, the bond hearings that Dan was talking about, they're, they're intensive only because we have to do them more frequently, we have to do, with their more in-depth, they take a little bit longer. Preliminary hearings, the same way, it's just more, more time-intensive things that we have to do more frequently and quicker than we had to in the past. In the past, with the preliminary hearings, for instance, the case would sit in Associate Circuit Court for six months before it was set for a prelim. Now it's in court one time, and then there's a prelim. So it just speeds up everything, including our, our actions. So based upon that, if anyone has any questions for me, happy to answer them, otherwise I'll turn back over to Mr. White.
Are there any commissioners who have any questions? Thank you very much. I always appreciate the, the data. It helps to make it real, and we have real numbers we can sink our teeth into, so thank you. Mr. White, did you have anything that you would like to, or, Mr. Prosecutor, I don't mean to be disrespectful, did you have anything that you would like to add to that?
No, I mean, I have to answer any question.
Okay. Are there any questions in general on this issue from commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter, please proceed.
Thank you. Again, just thanks for, for being here. I fully support your request, plan on, you know, encouraging the commission to, to do that, get you guys three additional folks, two prosecutors, and a support staff. You know, I know there's a big backlog from COVID, and I know that's not exclusive to Clay County. That's a, a problem, as you mentioned, that exists across the country. I guess one question I have is, you know, you mentioned that this would be for the remainder of '21 and then for, for '22 as well. Obviously, that will be the duration in which we have the additional funds under the ARP. After that, I don't anticipate we're going to get additional federal dollars, so what's your best guess as to whether or not this will become a, a permanent addition to the, the amount that we'll need to budget out of traditional county dollars after 2022?
So the way I see that taking place is prosecuting attorney's office and the commission getting together and working through those numbers during the budget process, which would be for 2023, and then coming to some decisions about, does some of that need to be, all of it need to be carried over, some of it need to be carried over, and where we go based upon the numbers. So, you know, clearly, I think the numbers about what's going on in our county and in other counties supports these being permanent, but I think, let's, let's do 20, the rest of 2021, let's do 2022 and see where we're at.
Gotcha. No, that, that's clarifying, and I, and I appreciate it. It sounds like then, again, I, I support this, and I would encourage my commissioners, my fellow commissioners, to, to give you the funding necessary to do this, and I, and I hope we get this done for you quickly. But I, but I do think we should be aware then that most likely what we're talking about is a permanent budget increase, not just a, a COVID-related temporary increase, because the numbers that we were just presented with, it suggests that you all have sort of a structural, long-term shortage in attorneys in the office, and that you'd like to try and fix that, which I, I appreciate the numbers and, and that information. But I guess I, you know, we should probably be aware of that going into this, that this is probably going to be a longer-term commitment.
And to be honest with the commission, which I've always tried to be, is we, we always try to be under budget. We try to come ask for what we need, not what we want, because we're not in the business of wants, we're in the business of needs, and we do it for the citizens of the county, because that's who we represent, that's who elected me, and that's who I respond to. And it's important, I think, for all elected officials to understand the difference between need and want. And I, I believe this commission is receptive to that, which is a breath of fresh air in Clay County, I'll just say that.
Well, thank you, and again, I appreciate all your hard work for the county. Thanks.
Certainly, we want the chief budget officer to reach out to you and go ahead and start looking at those numbers and how it is we would proceed forward. So I'm sure you're already in communication with the chief budget officer, so we will, once that comes to a point where we can take it up, I think we should be placing it on the agenda.
All right. I appreciate your time. Thank you. And appreciate the, the comments and, and the opportunity.
Thank you very much. With that, that concludes our discussion items. Obviously, that ran a little, a little long, but I think that we were dealing with two extremely important issues, so I think that we, I think that that was well spent. With that, public hearings, there aren't unlisted consent agenda, there are no items on a consent agenda today. That brings us to our regular agenda. I believe the first two items are companion issues. Mr. Administrator, when you're prepared, please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-123 and 2021-124 are combined. It is a request to approve a subdivision of Bell Oaks Stable Estate that would result in a replat. I will turn the microphone over to Planning and Zoning for further comment.
Please proceed.
This is Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a rezoning and final plat request for Bell Oaks Stable Estate. I have the property pulled up on the, on the screen. It's outlined here in the yellow. Want to give you a general vicinity. This is 92 Highway that runs to the south of the property with City of Smithville city limits a little over a mile to the west, and DD Highway with the Corps of Engineers, Smithville Lake property just to the west of the subject property. I'm going to zoom in so you can see the property a little bit better. We have two cases that deal with this property today. The first one is creating a five-acre lot out of the approximately 45 acres. So this, this is the entire parcel here. It has some flood plain, a little bit of flood plain running through it. It's 45 acres, as you see it in green there. The request is to subdivide this kind of odd-shaped five acres in the light blue so the applicant can build a house. The rest of the property is actually, has a permit for, a conditional use permit for a public stable, and we'll talk about that with the next case. But this request is just to break off this five acres so they could build a house on the five acres. The five acres would be rezoned to residential zoning. It would be R5 zoning, which is residential ranchette, which is our current zoning for any lot that is between five and 10 acres. And the larger, roughly 39 acres, would stay zoned agricultural. This is located in the natural resources tier, which is typically the area around Smithville Lake. We are going to put a 15-foot recreational easement within the 30-foot utility easement on the front of the property in case a trail is ever put in along 92 Highway. There, this case, with any rezoning case, was noted, public noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. There are five rezoning criteria that both the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission, or, excuse me, Planning and Zoning Commission and staff felt were met with this case. The applicant received all of their outside agency approvals, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning and final plat with a couple of conditions that you can see in Exhibit A. Those are just a couple of minor changes to the plat. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners have about this case.
Are there any questions for Planning and Zoning on the, on these two issues? Seeing none. Is, if the applicant is available, and I want to stress that while we do certainly want to give any applicant or any other interested person a chance to speak, there is no obligation to speak, so if the applicant is present and would like to say anything to the commission, that would certainly be in order, or if there's any other citizen who would like to speak on this issue. Seeing none. So we'll now move to, is the disposition of the commission to put this on regular or consent for our next meeting?
I'm comfortable with regular.
Regular? Very well. We will place 21, excuse me, 2021-123, 124 on next meeting's agenda for regular?
Yeah, well, just to clarify with Commissioner Thompson, so, so usually we'd put this on consent. Is that, is that, yeah, I figured that, that's probably what you meant.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was looking.
You're bearing with me, consent, you know?
I've done that before too, so.
I was, that, that, that kind of was more of what I expected, but clearly, any commissioner who wants to put something on regular has the availability to do that. But, yeah, I think consent probably is more appropriate in this particular case. But, yeah, I think consent probably is more appropriate in this particular case, so thank you for the clarification. That brings us to 2021-125. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-125 is that additional issue relative to the previous issue, requesting approval of a conditional use permit for a stable on the property, and I would defer again to Planning and Zoning for further comment.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a conditional use permit, actually a renewal of a conditional use permit for a public stable, and we're discussing the same property. The stable facility would be located on the 39 acres, still zoned agricultural. The conditional use permit was initially approved in December of 2002 with a 10-year time period. They renewed the conditional use permit in 2012 and additional 10 years was given. And since they were going through the plating process to create this five-acre lot, they decided to renew the conditional use permit rather than coming back next year when it expired. There are no major changes to the use of the stable, nor any new structures. There are conditional use permit criteria out of the Land Development Code that both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission feel they have met. There are parking requirements that staff also believes they have met, and there are animal unit standards, which is one animal unit per acre. They currently have 12 horses on the 39 acres, so they are well under the allowed number of animals on this parcel. They have received all their outside agency approvals and Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval with seven conditions you can see in Exhibit A. Those are the same conditions from the previous case. I will tell you, we did update the timeline to give them 15 years rather than 10 years before they would have to renew. The reason for that is we have not had any complaints or any opposition to this case since 2002, when they initially received their conditional use permit. And I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Actually, rather anticipated question that I was going to pose, and that was whether or not there had been any issues raised as far as compliance with the conditions set forth 10 years ago. Has it pretty much been smooth sailing?
Yes, sir. I'm not aware of any complaints and definitely not any substantiated complaints, and we have not had any issues with this conditional use permit.
So they are in compliance with the existing agreement, I, I think it's safe to say?
Yes.
Very good. Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Carpenter, do you either have a question?
No question.
Okay. Would the applicant, if present, care to speak, or would anyone else care to speak? Seeing none. Is there a recommendation for consent or regular agenda on 125?
Consent is good for me.
I think consent is appropriate, so 21, excuse me, 2021-125 would also be a consent item. That moves us to, to 2021-126 and 127. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, again, another combined request, 2021-126 and 2021-127 relates to a replating of subdivision, approval of replating to a subdivision, Arrowhead Creek. I'll turn the floor over to Planning and Zoning.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a rezoning and final plat request for Arrowhead Creek. I've got it pulled up on the aerial again. Want to give you the general vicinity. This is 144th Street to the north. The property's outlined again in yellow. Plattsburg Road is just to the west with Carney city limits within a mile to the east. A Highway a little bit farther over to the west, and then 92 Highway is up to the north. And then I'll zoom in and get a closer look at the property. And with this case, we are not creating any new parcels. We have two parcels existing that were platted and we're moving a property line. So currently, this red line is the property line between this house and this house. The proposal is to move that property line right here. It would create two roughly 19, 19 to 20-acre lots. We have a sister case after this that will talk about vacating this utility easement. But basically, we're just moving this property line from here to here. We have to rezone each lot to R1, which is a residential rural zoning, which is for lots between 10 and 20 acres. But as I stated, there are no new lots being created. The City of Carney was sent a review and they commented that they have no comments for this case. This case has the same five rezoning criteria with any case. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff believe those criteria have been met. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. You can see there is a little bit of floodplain that goes through this property as well in this area, but each lot already has a house and it's located far north of that floodplain. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning and final plat, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission? If the applicant is present, obviously, they have the option to comment or, or not as they wish, would the applicant need, would care to comment?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone from the public who would care to comment? Seeing new com, seeing no comments. Is it the intention of the commission to go regular or consent on this particular item?
Consent.
Yes, I think consent is appropriate. So 20, 127, 126, excuse me, I went backwards. We'll be up here on next, next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-128.
Commissioners 2021, excuse me, dash 128, is that sister request to approve the vacation of that utility easement that you saw previously on the slide? I'll turn the floor over to Planning and Zoning.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a request to vacate this utility easement along this old property line as part of the plating or replating of this property. We will place a new utility easement on the new property line. The Land Development Code has four criteria, which you can see on page two of your transmittal, that must be met for a vacation request. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff believe those four criteria have been met. As part of this case, we send out a referral to utility companies and other agencies, and we have not received any objection to vacating this utility easement. And Platte Clay Electric and Spire have specifically notified us that they have no objection to vacating this utility easement. We did not receive any opposition from adjacent property owners for this case as well, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval. And I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present.
Questions from the commission? The applicant, if they would care to comment, obviously are free to do so?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Anybody from the public care to comment? Seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and, and seek, and obviously, my recommendation is also to go on consent, but something I want to point out just to, for clarification is, as we are putting these items on consent agenda, they will be bundled together in one group at our next meeting and voted on as a group. Any commissioner may, of course, who wishes to can have an item removed. Clearly, we would welcome anybody who wants to come up to our meetings, but once it's on consent agenda, it is deemed by ourselves to be non-controversial, so certainly take that into account on any decisions to reappear at the next meeting. Certainly, you are always free and welcome. With that, what is the intention of the commission as far as consent or regular agenda? Consent? Very well. 2021-128 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to another grouping, 2021-128, excuse me, 129, 130, and 131. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, as the presiding commissioner said, this is a package of 3, 2021-dash-129, 2021-dash-130, and 21, 2021-dash-131 is to approve the subdivision, say it with me, Paw Paw Hills. I'll turn the floor over to the Planning and Zoning.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a rezoning preliminary and final plat application for Paw Paw Hills. I've got it pulled up on the screen again. Again, it's outlined in yellow. This is Range Road that runs north and south in front of the property, and then Liberty city limits is just to the west of this and within the one-mile boundary with the City of Liberty. And then I'll zoom in. But basically, the request is the property owner owns roughly 130 acres in this area, and they are requesting to create two 10-acre lots that you can see listed as Lot 1 and Lot 2. I'll highlight the whole parcel that's owned by the applicant. There is a 10-acre lot just to the south that's not involved with this, but we're, we're creating these two lots that would be rezoned from Ag to R1. Once again, because they're between 10 and 20 acres, and then the plating that goes along with that. This case has the same five rezoning criteria. We're going to put a 15-foot recreational easement within the 30-foot utility easement on the front of this property as well. It's located in what's considered the rural low-density tier of the county. We sent the City of Liberty a case review for this case and did not receive any comments back. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and Planning and Zoning staff believe the five rezoning criteria have been met. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. You can see that there is floodplain around the property, but not on the two 10-acre parcels that we are plating. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval with one condition that you see in Exhibit A, which is just a couple of changes to the recording copy of the final plat. The applicant is present, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? Very well. Would the applicant care to comment?
No.
Very well. Is there anyone from the public present who would care to comment? Seeing none. What is the recommendation of the commission as far as next meeting and putting this either on consent or regular agenda?
Consent for me.
Consent.
Those three items will be placed on our consent agenda for next week. That brings us to 2021-122. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-dash-122 is a resolution asked for by the Circuit Clerk to approve a sole-source vendor, Kodak Alaris, and to do a two-year service agreement with the same. Folks are here from the Circuit Clerk's office to speak.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I'm Brian Swing, IT Director of the Judicial Information Services, and I'm asking the commissioner to approve the Kodak Alaris as a sole-source provider. We have a microfilm machine that is pretty, that's about 25-plus years old and, and need of repairs, and we have maybe 10 to 15 years' worth of microfilm, microfilming left to do on it.
Microfilming, that's, that's a term that I don't hear all that often.
You have to get into the Wayback Machine to talk.
Yeah, it, it feels a little bit that way. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Let's see, this is, this involves a sole-source contract. I'm a little bit inclined to put this on, ask this be put on regular because it is, you know, a bit more impactful. That doesn't mean that I have any particular questions or apprehensions, it just means I think that is the more appropriate place for this particular, this particular issue. Any, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it, it involves the expenditure of funds, so I concur with that decision, for sure.
Very well. Commissioner Thompson, you're good with that?
Satisfied, yes.
Thank you. So 2021-dash-122 will appear on next week's regular agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to 2021-132. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-dash-132 is to approve an RFP number 1221 for a term and supply contract with DataLink OnCall Cabling Services. Information Technology is here to add additional comments.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Kevin Shaw, Clay County IT Director. Before we now, we have the resolution 2021-132. This is to approve RFP 1221. It's a term and supply contract for data cabling services to award to DataLink. This is a recommendation as a result of a team effort where purchasing collected bids, there was five vendors, an evaluation committee was created, compiled of IT staff plus Clay County IT, I'm sorry, the Clay County Sheriff's IT, and they reviewed each of the five bids. Purchasing compiled and scored the results, and now we come before you recommending to accept the DataLink proposal.
Are there any comments or questions? Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter? Are there any comments? Well, the room is cleared considerably since we've gone through those last few issues. Anyone from the public who would care to comment? I see none. Yes, Commissioner Carpenter?
Just in terms of the, the cost, I don't see it on here, so what is the anticipated cost of?
This is a term and supply contract, and DataLink came back as the lowest and best bid.
If I might interject, I think that means that there would be a cost as needed, so there's, there's not a specific line item cost, but this would be as, as needed.
As needed.
But there is a line item in the budget that would, that this money would be derived from to, to satisfy those obligations.
Correct.
Okay. Once again, as Commissioner Carpenter pointed out, this does involve the expenditure of funds. I think regular, regular agenda would be a good place for this. It might not be a bad idea if, if, wouldn't we hear this again on Wednesday? Commissioner Carpenter, if you'd like, maybe we can look at what that line item is and see if we can come up with what historical spending has been in that particular item. That, that might be helpful when we, when we talk next week.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments on 132? I, I believe this is something that's appropriate for our regular agenda. Is that?
Agreed.
Very well. 132 will be on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-133. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-dash-133 is to approve an IFB number 30321 for a bridge replacement on Northeast 148th Street over Carroll Creek. It's a BRO project. The Highway Department is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carl Walters, Clay County Director of Administration. This BRO bridge, as I had said before, is bridge replacement off system. It's not a MoDOT bridge. It is a county bridge, and it has been deemed to be replaced under unsafe at MoDOT's request. So I believe it's been closed for a period of time, and we're going to use the bond monies as to replace the bridge. 148th Street is south of 92, east of Carney, there by the Eaststrom Parks Barn. Again, the Lehman Construction Company that bid on it, there's, as I said before, there's only a couple of people that do the haunch. This is the last haunch, as we talked about before on the bridge before. Haunch bridge that we'll have done, and it's got a skew in it as well because it's got a curve to it, so they have to meet those requirements as well with that bridge being said.
Thank you very much. You'd, you'd mentioned, it was mentioned here that it was required to be closed traffic. I assume it's still currently closed?
Correct. It is closed and it is barricaded off to, for no traffic to go through whatsoever.
Very well. And I think we talked about this before, the, the costs, we're talking about just under 101.25 million dollars. What is the, and I think we've mentioned before, the projected completion time?
As soon as the MoDOT, we'll have meetings on it to turn around and do a start date for it, and I believe it's 365 days at this point right now.
Very well. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Thompson?
No comments, no, no, no questions right now, but I will say, Carl, I like when I see you up here, because that means we're fixing roads and bridges, and that makes me happy, so. That's all I got to say.
I'm trying to one time not have to come up here to have to speak.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Thompson. It's nice to be making progress on, on these important projects. The 1.25 million dollar figure, because it's going to be an 80% federal The 1.25 million dollar figure, because it's going to be an 80% federal reimbursement, right?
80/20, yes.
So is the 1.25 million, is our 20%?
It's combined, that is complete project 80/20, yes. That is the complete cost.
That's the total cost.
Yes.
So we'll get an 80% reimbursement on that cost.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Obviously, this is a pretty expensive proposition. This does the expenditures of county money, so I think it's pretty clearly a regular agenda item. Is that in agreement with everyone? Very well. I'm sorry, I should have asked for comments from the assembled crowd, but I don't see anybody rising to comment. So 2021-133 will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-134. Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-134 is to approve an IFB for term and supply contract with Site 1 landscape, Advanced Turf Solutions, Grasspad, Midwest Turf Incorporated, Reinders Inc., and Van Dees Supply, and this has everything to do with fertilizer, herbicides, pesticides, turf maintenance materials for parks. And Parks is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is to take care of all of our fertilizers, as the administrator said, herbicides, pesticides throughout the park, and also for, that are being used, and also for the golf course, to keep our greens and fairways and keep the weeds out, take care of the things that we need to do to make us have a nice area for people to come out to the park to see. This is under the Park Number 240, 746 account, 335, in the, with the 92,000 budget that was approved in 2021 for the term and supply of this project.
Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Okay. Seeing none, and this is not a renewal, this is a new contract?
Yes, it'll be a new contract, and with all the vendors that they have in place, he's went down through and marked all the ones that do the supplies that he needs to do, and along with the nature center, to do the things that they need, that they've worked through before in years past that do the projects, or the things that they need to keep the grass growing and the weeds away.
Very well. I think it's, once again, expenditure of monies, so 2021-134 is regular agenda, what the commission would like to see. Seem to getting a head nod, so 2021-134 will appear on next week's regular agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. That brings us to 2021-135. Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-135 is to approve an agreement, and this is an annual renewal, for the local emergency planning committee that we do in conjunction with Mark, Regional Council. Sheriff's Department is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
Good morning. Melissa Evans, Clay County Emergency Management Director, Sheriff's Office. Each year, the Mid-America Local Regional Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, applies for the Emergency Response Commission, MERC, where there are a lot of acronyms in emergency management, for funding to support the operations of the LEPC. As a part of this application package, the agreement of all participating counties must have an updated commissioner's signature. I wanted to explain, in case you weren't aware of, the LEPC is a cooperatively-formed local emergency planning committee that includes Cass County, Clay County, Jackson County, Platte County, and Ray County. Each county receives grant funding from the Missouri Response Commission in accordance with the Missouri's Emergency Planning Committee Right to Know Act. These funds are used to and used for the program to support the LEPC's hazardous materials planning, training, and related activities. Mark can then provide administrative and technical assistance to carry out the scope of work developed for the grant. The actual agreement serves that the Mid-America LEPC is eligible to receive an estimated $57,998 of CEPF funds. Clay County's portion of these allocation, approximately $11,626. The payment will be sent from the Missouri Emergency Response Commission, MERC, to Clay County, which upon receipt, Clay County will forward to Mid-America Regional Council. And I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that kind of gives you an idea of what it is. We have been doing it annually for several years now, and it does provide a great service to the region. It just kind of clarifies that the monies come here, we service it and send it on, and that's where it goes, and that's what it's for.
Yeah, well, excuse me, while this is somewhat, I guess ministerial to use the word, still, it's important that this come before the commission and that the commission approve this before it is signed and move forward. With that, is there a, I'm inclined to put this on regular, is there any thought that we, I think that's probably the place to go, this is important enough to do that. Does that seem consistent with what you?
Oh, I'm fine either way, yeah. Whatever.
I'm sorry, I was trying to jump the gun there. Did any commissioners have any questions?
No, I just, thank you for the information on it, I appreciate it. And it sounds like we're not actually expending any funds, right? We're saving and then passing them along.
Correct. It's all brandings coming to us.
So I'm actually fine putting on consent if you all want to, but either way is good with me.
I think you could put it on consent, just purely just to pass through.
Okay. In that case, I don't have a problem with it going on to consent. It came to me for my signature, and I thought it best to push this forward to the commission to have it looked at, so I am fine with consent if that's the will of the commission. All right, then, 2021-135 will appear on next week's consent agenda. Thank you. 2021-136, please.
Commissioners, 2021-136 is to approve the use of county grounds for the Liberty Summer Band 2021 outdoor concerts. This is something that has happened in years past, and the request here is to also waive any fees, so this is for being on the grounds and also not, we are not feeing the Liberty Summer Band group for their performances. Facilities is here for additional comment.
Please proceed.
Donna Koontz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, this is a request from our neighbors, the Liberty Parks and Recreation Department. We, this will be the 22nd year we have partnered to do this. It takes place at the Liberty, excuse me, at the Rooney Justice Center out on the Plaza Concrete area. It is a free concert, open to the public, and it takes place four Tuesdays in a row in the month of June, and they were asking if, once again, they could come and set up on the Plaza and perform for us.
Very well. Are there any questions of the deputy administrator? This is something that's reoccurring, so I think that we're good to go with consent agenda. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yes.
Very well. 2021-136 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to our final item, I believe, which is 2021-137. Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-137 is relative to the recent directives issued by the Centers for Disease Control and some of the relief of some of the mandates here in the county. This is to rescind Resolution 2020-97, which was passed last year, a little, a few weeks before this one, a year ago, for a state of emergency, so this is to declare that state of emergency over.
Very well. Comments? There's no way we can really present because this is a commission item. Would anybody care to, Commissioner Thompson, would you care to comment or make any observations?
Commissioner, I feel like this is appropriate to move forward with, and I don't know if we are necessarily in a state of emergency right now, and hopefully we're going to be moving forward and getting better every day, so, yeah, I feel comfortable with this.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. So I think I probably am as well. I am curious, are there any things that the current emergency status allow us as a commission to do that, that we will lose, just in case, you know, something were to come up that we would need to take quick action? I guess I'm wondering what we're actually changing by doing this. Obviously, we're rescinding the emergency order, and obviously, we've rolled back the mask rules under guidance, you know, in accordance with the CDC. I just want to make sure we're not doing anything that we don't, you know, unintended consequences by doing this.
I don't know that this allows us particular access to additional funding that we would not normally have access to. Do we, do we have a feel for that at the moment?
I would defer somewhat too legal on this, but just as a comment, I think this emerg, and I wasn't here at the time, but I think the passing of the emergency declaration enabled us to administer the CDC and county guidelines as part of that whole process that took place then. Now that those directives have been vacated, I think this is just the second, the next step in that, is to take that state of emergency off because it's no longer required for us to implement the CDC guidelines. Counsel might have additional comments as far as that goes?
No, I think it's generally correct. Certainly, I'd be happy to look at more, anything relating to this, if you want to keep it on regular and address that specifically next week. If you want to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, and I appreciate it. You know, I'm, I think it's very likely that I'll be in support of this, and, you know, if the only thing that it did was allow for the mask mandates and allow for some of the restrictions in terms of quantities of people and businesses closing and that sort of thing, I do think probably we're at a stage here where we're not going to utilize those tools anymore. But, yeah, it would be helpful to know exactly, you know, what we'd be changing by doing this. So thank you. I appreciate it.
I think in spite of the fact that we seem to have turned the corner, I think it's prudent to put that on regular. As you say, we never know what's going to come up, and this allows us to do a little more research to make sure that we are not, we're not walking away from a position we need to be in to be able to access some of these funds and some of this aid. I suspect not. Last year, you know, prior to this coming out, I issued a similar kind of a declaration just as Presiding Commissioner. My motivation at that time, and still is, was to, as been pointed out, to make sure that we had the ability to access any emergency assets, any emergency help that we could, not being certain how it might go forward with the commission. The commission at that time obviously passed this resolution. It's my thought to go ahead, and at the same time we take this up, is just to make mention that I will be also repealing that, it doesn't require a vote of the commission, but it seems like we kind of group it all together as one item. So, yeah, I don't, I have not perceived anything that, at the moment, gives us advantage to have this emergency, and quite honestly, I think that it sends a good signal to say that we are not in emergency right now, but that we are obviously dealing with a serious situation, but it no longer constitutes the emergency. Again, as long as that does not compromise our ability to access any aid from another government entity. Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think you pretty much covered it right there, and I feel comfortable if we put this on regular and we can just, as long as we don't, you know, lose any funding with this, but it was my understanding it was just to be able to follow the CDC guidelines as well.
And this allows a week for that, for some of that research to take place, make sure that we are not compromising our position. Any comment from the public? I see none. With that, I think it's the consensus of the commission that 2021-137 be put on regular agenda for next week's meeting. With that, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. I would entertain a motion to put those items respectively on consent and respect, and a regular agenda for our next meeting next week. Is there a motion related to that?
I can make the motion to put 2021-123, 124, 125, 126, 127, 128, 129, 130, 131, 1, let's see, 135, 136 on the consent agenda? And I believe that was the total for the consent agenda. Does that look right to everybody? Okay. And the remainder on the regular agenda, I can say that, I can go number by number if.
I'm not sure that's absolutely necessary, because we do have those records, but, yeah, that certainly agrees with the notes I took during the meeting. Motion has been made to place the items listed on the consent and regular agenda respectively for next week's meeting. Discussion, Commissioner Thompson.
I'm good, thank you.
Very well. Commissioner Carpenter, it is your motion. You're free to close.
Thank you. I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to comment on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would care to comment on any non-agenda items? That would be items not covered under today's discussions. Seeing none, are there any office holders who would care to comment on non-agenda items? And I see someone making their way to the podium. Please proceed.
Good, I think it's afternoon. Yes, afternoon, Commissioners, it's Lydia McAvoy, the Collector. I actually have two items that I just wanted to touch base with you on today. I wanted to come back and give you the status on city contracts because the procedure ended up going differently than what I had promised you when I was here before. Back in 2012, it had been the recommendation of council that the commission have an approved binding offer and that we give that to the cities, and then that way we knew, when they agreed to it, that it would be acceptable. But I'm grateful for apparently the faith that you put in me this time because Commissioner Graham, or Commissioner, Counselor Graham indicated to me that I was fine to go ahead and offer the draft. It's actually the draft that I wrote, so, and I had followed up with Commissioner Carpenter with some comments. The auditor gave me some feedback, and I tweaked a couple things, but other than that, it went out basically exactly as I had discussed with you, and I received Pleasant Valleys signed this morning, and Smithville's has already approved theirs. I know Village of Oakview has met, and Lawson has met, so I anticipate being back at the next work session with several contracts, and hopefully they go through because the cities have already committed, so I just wanted to make sure you understood the status of that. And then I just wanted to bring up an issue. I would like to respectfully request a seat at any table where there is a discussion of the Collector's Office moving to any different locations or providing different service to the taxpayers. I feel like a cart got in front of a horse in the most recent discussion of us moving to Bank Liberty, and to the extent that I said, yes, I was excited about a drive-through and that that somehow caused that, I apologize. I would have known that that drive-through is going to be, going to be a problem, but, so I think what might work best, because I want to cooperate, I want the Collector's Office to cooperate. If you guys need my space, we'll move. If you need, if there's some need going on, so that the Collector needs to do something different, we definitely are here to cooperate in any way, shape, or form, but I just want to, so I know real estate is often discussed in executive session. If it's going to be discussed and it's going to affect, you know, our office moving, I would just respectfully request maybe to be able to, you know, comment at that point. And then also, I just want to clarify for anyone that might have a discussion outside of my presence, that generally, it makes absolutely no sense for the Collector and Assessor to be in different buildings. And I know that, since speaking with Kathy, and it totally makes perfect sense, she doesn't need a fifth location for her staff, and there certainly is enough room in that building for all of her staff, and certainly not in half of the building, so that really needs to be addressed. I'm not sure if everyone here understands the general taxpayer use case, because you guys all maybe get assessed and pay your bill online, as about 200-plus thousand Clay County residents do, but we did serve over 50,000 people in person in 2019. I didn't use the 2020 statistics because they were a little skewed, but, so, that is a normal thing. It's an average, I think it's around 200 a day, which, obviously, there aren't 200 down there right now, but there are other days that make up for it, and every single person comes to the Collector's window, and I think Kathy will attest to this, they come to the Collector's window because they're told they need to pay their taxes or get a paid tax receipt, and that's where you pay your taxes. Between February and October, almost everyone, and I'm really not kidding, 80% plus, the reason they don't have a paid tax receipt is because they did not somehow get properly assessed, for whatever reason, and so they are just sent right from our office over to the Assessor's Office. Right now, it's a pretty easy little journey, they go over there. What the Assessor does is complicated, and it's much easier to do in person. They tried during the pandemic, they did a great job doing it online and whatever, but they need to see marriage licenses, death certificates, divorce decrees, titles from out of state, you know, photo ID sometime, I mean, I'm just, all the different things that they might need. And so it's very important for them largely to be able to meet the public in person, and it takes a bit. Then, once they're done, the data comes back over to us, we make a bill, they pay. I cannot imagine the frustration of a taxpayer if they come to this building, the Collector's not here, the Collector's over there, so then they still think they need the Collector because they haven't talked to anybody else. They go over there, come into our drive-through, find out they need the Assessor, use one-way streets to come all the way back around, see the Assessor, and then be told, so you know that place you started? That's where you need to go back and pay. It just, I just don't understand how it works. And the current half of the building, we would be very crammed in there. We are willing to cram. It's not about us, it's about the taxpayer experience. I have spent 10 years doing nothing professionally but trying to hone the taxpayer experience. That's the only thing I can offer in that office. I can't make taxes go away. I can just try to make them easier. And so I have a lot of insight in what would work and what I would love to do and what could happen. So I just would like a seat at the table if there are further discussions. And I wanted to express publicly, both to members of the public that may be watching on YouTube or whatever, and to the commission, that I have no intention of being obstructive. Like, we will move. If you need us to move, we will move. We will split our space, we will go wherever is necessary. I just think we, I want to make sure that we still offer an excellent, as excellent as possible, service to the taxpayers. And, I mean, frankly, the, I also want to make sure, because I've heard this from members of the public before when we were talking about the annex, some people are just like, well, they should learn their lesson, you know, they should just do, I mean, maybe taxpayers will finally figure it out and do it right. That's a bit unfair, in my humble opinion, it's very unfair, but I'll give them the credit and say it's a bit unfair. With all due respect to the legislators in the room, Missouri's personal property collection system is crazy and unique amongst the 50 states, and we have lots of people that move in and have no idea. And we have people that in the greater Kansas City area move back and forth between Kansas and Jackson and Platte and Clay Counties and have no idea what to do. We have people that fill out their assessment form every single year, and one year they forget their Toyota. You know, those kinds of, these people are not immoral or stupid. They are good people that mean to do the right thing, and yet thousands of them still end up at our windows, you know, and it's their God-given right. They're paying taxes, and they voted for me, so they have the right to come in and ask a question. And if they can't find us, or if it gets very difficult for them to assess us, that's going to really bother me because it's really been my mission for 10 years. So, anyway, I just would like to have a seat at the table, probably a joint seat at the table with the Assessor might also be a good idea. We could work out something about the assessment, maybe. It would be ugly, but, you know, there's technology in the world, so that could work. I just don't see over there where we tell them to go, to park, to get that done, or to come in. That lobby area is very small, and once we've got three or four people sitting at a kiosk trying to get assessed, you know, we're done. And good luck with them parking in that parking lot because as soon as there's about six cars in that drive-through line, the parking is really going to be inaccessible. I have some new knowledge that I would not have had a year ago, because we ran a drive-through during COVID for the very first time ever. And at first, we ran it up at the annex, and it was horrible for our best taxpayers because they're in line with their coupon and their check, or their coupon and their debit card, they've done everything they're supposed to do, they're here to pay, and they are behind, and I don't want to misbehave and kind, but, you know, some taxpayer, we have, you know, non-English speakers, we have people that don't hear well, we have whatever, and it's taking a long time for them to figure out what they owned, when they owned it, us to find them in the system, it's taking forever, they have lots of questions, that kind of thing. And these people are stuck. And what we did in that situation is we literally jumped out of the truck and went and got their stuff physically and ran their receipt back to them. I would like my staff to not have to work outside on a regular basis, but they were still frustrated. Now they're holding a paid tax receipt and they can't go anywhere because there was only one lane. So then we moved over to North Gate Middle School. That worked. We had all parking lot. So once somebody had paid, the paid security guys would come over, they'd move the cones, they'd show them, you know, go around that way and go home, and they could leave. And we could send people all over the parking lot to go sit, and while we solved various problems and found them. Of course, in a building, all of them would park and come into a lobby, and that would work fine. But you've got to have more than one place, and I know there's two lanes there, but if there's two people in there, there's just nowhere for anybody behind them to go to if they've done their part. And those are actually the taxpayers that we probably do want to make the experience easiest for. And those are the ones that'll finally figure out we're over there and use the drive-through, but all the other ones won't, and there's a lot of them. So, anyway, just wanted to make those comments and just ask for if the commission is, you know, making decisions about real estate that have anything to do with the Collector's Office moving. Again, absolutely willing to cooperate, 100%, but I really would like to not go backwards in the taxpayer experience, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that you put the focus where it should be, and that is, we are here to serve the taxpayers and the public. So whatever we can do as we move forward to make their experience more efficient and more pleasant is what we want to do. Clearly, there is, there is an intelligent approach to making sure that we get, that we take the experiences of office holders into account so we have all the best information to work from. Thank you. Any other office holders care to make comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, that brings us to agency comments. Are there any agencies who would like to comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Mr. Administrator, we've come to county administrator comments. Would you care to say anything?
Sure, just a very quick administrative comment. You all, as commissioners, might have noticed that your packets are a little thinner this time than, for example, the packet that I have and the packet that the clerk will get. We made a decision on some of these large IFBs and the RFPs for acronyms and the terms and supplies to eliminate some of the pages in those that have nothing to do but just definitions and some statements and so forth, and not include those in your packets because it was not efficient, it used paper that we didn't necessarily need to use. So we, everything that you have has everything to do with the pricing and the contract terms and all of those sorts of things. We just took out the pages that really didn't do anything in terms of adding to the discussion. There is a full packet on the commission table, right in front of you, that the public is certainly available to access. The packet that I have is a full packet, and the packet that will go to the clerk will be a full packet that will have every page of every document in it. But just as an FYI, unless you find that to be something you don't wish to happen, that is likely what we'll do going forward, again, just for efficiency and to reduce the use of the paper supply that we have. Just FYI.
Thank you very much. That brings us to commissioner comments. There's an issue I'd like to touch on. Obviously, the certificate of participation has been an issue that has been before this commission and previous commissions on a number of occasions. I want to commend the administrator for assembling his team of, I think it's referred to as the Bond Fund Review Team. We look forward to the results of those good efforts. Leading up to that, I'd like to seek consensus from the commission to task the administrator with the, with getting costs in a timeline to return the lot at 152 and North Brighton to its original form, not necessarily putting the brush back, of course, but essentially I would like us to make moves to filling in that hole and putting it back into shape as it should be, into its original form. To tell you the truth, what I'm looking for is, we need to bury, both figurative and literally, this ill-conceived project of putting a 60,000-square-foot building at 152 and North Brighton. The citizens don't want it, and I think clearly our commission is inclined towards a very different direction. So with that, I would just, I don't know that it requires a resolution, but just to ask the administrator to come to us with costs and time to fill that hole in, and as I say, bury for good and all this concept of a 60,000-square-foot governmental palace at 152 and North Brighton. I would ask my fellow commissioners if they are willing to go ahead and task the administrator with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think we all three agree that that was not the best idea and that we're going to go in a different direction, and I'm glad that we are and that we all agree on that. I actually talked to the administrator about it a little bit yesterday. You know, I think tasking him with figuring out what the best way to maintain value at that property going forward, whether that's filling in the hole or not, you know, I don't know for eventual reassale purposes exactly what is the best way to get max value out of that property and to maintain value in that property. So whatever that is, is what I think we ought to do. If that's filling in the hole, then that makes sense to me.
Commissioner Thompson?
No, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter. I think whatever is going to get us the most money and our return when we go to sell this property is definitely where I'm going to land on this, but I feel very comfortable that our county administrator is going to help us figure that out.
Well, and the thing is, I think I could say, I think it's a good, not only just practical but symbolic, and while it is inappropriate for us to get too deeply into discussions of the disposition of that property, the sale of that property that gets into real estate issues, I think it is, I think it is a way to keep our options as open as possible going forward. So, Mr. Administrator, do you feel as though you have a clear instruction from the, from the commission?
Absolutely. We have access to resources that can counsel us, I'm sure, on the right way to present that property. And so if that includes filling the hole, as was stated, that might be what we do. We will not do anything like that until the commission decides that the proper expense is to do just that. So this would be nothing more than exercise to determine the right way to present it and what it would cost to restore it to its original state. That's all.
Thank you for that clarification. I just want to make sure the commissioners understand that this is just to get the cost, the decision to actually go forward in any action of this sort rests, in my opinion, with the commission. So this is just a matter of making sure that we have the numbers in front of us and make as intelligent and informed decision as possible. I see there's someone at the podium. I'll tell you what, I'm going to go ahead and finish commissioner comments. There's an office holder who would care to comment, but let me go ahead and run through commissioner comments, and then if there's no objection from the commission, I would like to go back and, I think, revisit office holder comments on non-agenda items, which would allow the office holder to speak. So Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments on the non-agenda? Or it could be agenda, actually. For us, it's rather open-ended, so do you have anything for commissioner comments?
I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, no.
With that, that concludes commissioner comments. We will just hop back real quick to comments on non-agenda items from office holders. Would you like to proceed?
Kathy Reinhardt, Clay County Assessor, I wasn't going to say anything, but since you brought this topic up, I was wondering if anyone had contacted Kansas City, since that is sitting in Kansas City, and maybe co-opting together and finding a developer that would put in and get us out from underneath this burden? I'm sure there's an opportunity there to not necessarily just sell this out, but with your help and Kansas City's help, you could find one of our bigger developers in Clay County and, you know, maybe get a 10-year tax abatement for going in and getting your fanny out of the flames. So that's all I was suggesting, is that somebody pick up the phone and call Kansas City and see what they might be willing to co-op together with you all so that we're not out, that the citizens of Clay County aren't out, but, because right now that's not generating a penny, but maybe later on, if you put like housing, apartments, some retail in the front, and I'm sure there's somebody that would do that with you, and I'm sure Kansas City has deeper pockets and bigger resources than we. Just a suggestion, that's all.
I appreciate that, and that does touch on something that is, at least in my opinion, and that is, we as a commission should investigate all options and do our homework to make sure, because we are also involved in a bond covenant, to make sure that we have, are proceeding in the best interest of taxpayers. And it's a little bit of a, there is some complexity to it, but I appreciate that observation. That brings us to approval of the minutes of previous sessions. Commissioners have one set of minutes, that is from Thursday, May 6, 2020, 10:00 a.m. meeting. If commissioners would like to review that in addition to as they have before, I would be open to entertaining a motion for the approval of the minutes of May 6.
I'll make a motion to approve the Thursday, May 6, 2021, 10:00 a.m. session as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of minutes of Thursday, May 6, 2021, 10:00 a.m. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a comment on the minutes. I do notice on the second page of the minutes, number nine, discussion items, the last sentence that begins currently, there is no action, I believe if you carry that on, required from thee, and there appears to be a word missing, and that's probably the word county on that particular topic. I think it might need to read, currently there is no action required from the county to continue participating.
I think that is, I think that's a good observation. I didn't catch that one. It's, I'll go ahead and just make the amendments faster. I would make the motion that we amend the minutes to include the word county under, in the last sentence of number nine, under discussion, to read, to read as amended. Currently, there are no actions required from the county to continue participating. Does that comport with what your concerns were, Mr. Administrator?
Yes.
Very well. There is amendment as just stated to the approval of our minutes of previous sessions. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us back to approval of the minutes of previous sessions. That would be May 6, 2021, 10:00 a.m. as amended. Are there any further amendments or any comments? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, it is your motion. You are free to close or make comment.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to written reports to the commission. Are there any written reports to be submitted today?
None today, thank you.
All right. Executive sessions are none listed under today's meeting. That brings us to adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.